That's what they say. I agree with them.
Which this will be the day he doesn't come.
It is nice to see you are.
Or not.
You are more than welcome to come to this side of the room. You just slide on in.
All right, we're gonna get started in just a moment. So if you guys want to wrap up any conversations you're in, thank you.
Nice change. So you don't have to say Fred.
Trying to give a little forewarning.
Were you looking at that Fred when you said that?
I only casually glanced in his direction while sweeping my gaze across the whole room.
Thank you, Brian.
But now that you've drawn attention. Okay, it is 1:00 PM on October 29th, 2025, and we call to order this meeting of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. And would you please rise for the invocation?
Our Father in Heaven, we're honored to meet here today to be able to gather for our civic process. We're grateful for the leaders that we have and for their willingness to serve our region and serve our city and our county. Father, we pray for wisdom today. We pray for clear reasoning. We pray for grace and mercy in the hearts of everyone here that regardless of stance, regardless of opinion or political persuasion, God, that we can see together a common purpose and come to wise agreements. We thank you, Lord, that you place in place all authorities, and we trust you in the processes, and we thank you for the American spirit that brings us together and for the gift it is to have this meeting this day and to be able to work together for the benefit of our community. And we say this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me be seated. We do not have Commissioner Corn on line. Is that correct? You know, he's attending other training. I just wanted to verify so I don't miss him accidentally. Commissioner, are you comfortable making the motions if I second?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. I move that we adopt the order of the agenda as amended. And the reason I didn't amend to remove his is I wasn't sure if he'll pop in because he's driving.
I believe it's not on the agenda.
Oh, I thought he was on the back.
So I think we can adopt as presented. So I'll just not second that if you want to go with it as presented.
Well, I didn't amend it. I said the reason.
Oh, I thought you said as amended.
No, I said the reason I didn't amend it is in case he were to pop on, and you said it was missing, so.
Okay, there we go. Then I'll step down in a second. Do we have any public comments specific to the order of the agenda? Specific to the order of the agenda?
Yeah, no, no, I had something here for the quiet.
Yeah, when we get to that part of the agenda, sir. Thank you.
I thought you said it had to do with the agenda.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Fisher Williams?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
All right, consent agenda. I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Step down in second. Do we have any public comment regarding the consent agenda? Any board deliberation?
Nope.
Roll call vote, please. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. And with that, we'll turn it over to the clerk's office for their three agenda items.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Afternoon.
Best part of the meeting. Before you, I have fiscal year '25 claims batch number 55 totaling $47,071 and 14 cents for your approval. And there's no real big thing on that one.
The only thing that jumped out to me, clerk, was the self-insurance. Just for folks who are aware, it's probably the largest item we had.
Okay.
$25,510.95.
Yeah, that's.
Does the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of FY '25 claims and batch number 55 totaling $47,071 and 14 cents.
Step down in second. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? I just want to check with the clerk. Is it correct that we don't have anyone online?
Actually, what I understand too, YouTube's not working, Amazon Web Services and Azure are down. So I don't know how much those play into what we've got, but that's part of it.
Thank you for the clarification.
YouTube is streaming, I thought.
Okay, Jessica said earlier that she could, one of them couldn't.
Okay. All right, do we have any board deliberation?
Nope.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Next, I have fiscal year '26 claims batch number four totaling $346,616.05. And the big ticket items on that is Rosenbridge Capital Lease for $31,000, tort insurance liability for $24,000, and the biggest ticket item is self-insurance medical for $116,342.57.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Nor do I. Would you like to make a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of the FY '26 claims and batch number four totaling $346,616.05.
Step down in second. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, board deliberation?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners. Finally, I have fiscal year '26 demand batch number four totaling $6,298.64. That's a Regent Blue Shield weekly payment.
No questions?
No questions. Are you still locked out? YouTube?
We're good. Yep.
Thanks. Would you like to make a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of FY '26 demands and batch number four totaling $6,298.64.
Step down in a second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, board deliberation?
None.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, clerk.
Can I have leave to talk about the election for one second?
Can I have a pause before you do that?
Yep.
We are getting an email saying that Zoom is not working. So can we have one second to pause? Is it so they do know that Zoom is not working?
The technology is reviewing it.
That's why it's always better to be here in person.
Is YouTube, did you go to YouTube?
So it's streaming, but we're hearing that people can't get into the Zoom meeting?
Excuse me, is this what they're looking at down the screen?
No.
What are you looking at the screen?
At our computer screens? So Zoom is a technology that we use for teleconferencing to allow people, when it's working, to participate in our public meetings without being there in person?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We're currently having a technological issue with it, so we're waiting to see if in a moment it can be resolved. If not, this is why people come to meetings in person, so we shall, shall see.
So YouTube is functioning.
So the stream's available, but the individual Zoom logins are not, it sounds like?
They just can't participate, but they can hear.
Right. Have we received any word from technology?
The Secretary of State's web services are down as well all morning long, so this may not be a short-term thing.
I actually think it's, it might be an hour thing, because this meeting is not typically at 1:00, and so it might, it clicks on a land use hearing time, and so it might be what link that we put on for people to look at. So when I, when I click on it, it's calling this a land use hearing link. That might be where the confusion is. So the.
Did everybody buy all their candy? Everybody ready?
Please wait. The webinar will begin soon.
Sorry, around me. Yeah, for the Zoom lead, it's just spinning. It doesn't open the meeting, but yes, you're on YouTube.
We're not sure if the link was the wrong one due to the time change.
It could be, but based on the rules, there is a disclaimer that puts you towards participating, and it is streaming, and so a technical difficulty is part of the disclaimer, so we can continue with the meeting and just leave it.
That's what I'd like to do, since we don't have a clear answer. Good to proceed? Okay, we're gonna proceed then, since we don't have a clear answer, and Zoom is not required. Okay. I'll start with IT's capability.
He was going to make an announcement about elections.
Thank you, everybody. I want to remind everybody, of course, that we have an election on Tuesday from 8:00 to 8:00. Not all of you have something to vote on. I've had some of my friends tell other of my friends, saying, "You don't forget to get out and vote," and in fact, I know they have nothing to vote on. They're gonna go to their precinct, and there's nothing there. The precinct will be closed. So I want to reiterate which precincts have no election for sure. Algoma has no election, Clagstone, Gamblin Lake, Lamb Creek, Priest Lake, Sagel, Southside, Spirit Valley, Westmond, and Renco. There are no elections in those precincts, just so you know. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Rosedale.
Thank you.
Next, we have Road and Bridge.
Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Road and Bridge Department, here to talk about my very favorite topic, railroad crossing quiet zones. So my memo's pretty long, but I'm just, I'm gonna read it, because there's a lot of information in here, and if I just wing it, I'm gonna leave out a bunch of key stuff, so bear with me. Railroad crossing quiet zones are areas where trains no longer blow their horns at every crossing, enabling quality-of-life improvements for nearby residents and reducing noise pollution. The process to establish a quiet zone is clearly defined by the Federal Railway Administration and usually involves safety upgrades to the crossings. In 2020, Bonner County did our first quiet zone at the Cootney Bay Road Crossing after the community raised interest and raised $15,000 to fund the necessary improvements at that crossing. This first quiet zone was a trial run, and while it was successfully implemented and has, it has shown the true cost and effort to establish and maintain quiet zones to be considerable. In the five years since, Road and Bridge estimates that the true cost of ongoing maintenance, upgrades, staff and crew time amounts to around $50,000, including that original $15,000 that the community raised. Far more than the community originally raised for the project, and the ongoing annual inspections, maintenance, paperwork, and red tape continue to be perpetual issues with periodic recertifications with the Federal Railway Administration. Now, understanding the true effort and cost involved, the Road and Bridge Department has been staunchly opposed to establishing any additional quiet zones because of the staff time, effort, and costs involved. Despite that, community interest in additional quiet zones has only grown stronger, especially for those in the Bottle Bay, Coca-Lola, and Oden Bay areas, and the idea was born that perhaps a better way of implementing quiet zones could be created, which takes the majority of the workload and cost off of the Road and Bridge Department and puts it onto the shoulders of the community members that want and benefit from the quiet zones. The attached checklist of necessary actions is a new framework for how this process could work. We've worked with the Bottle Bay community members, in particular Matt Loem, who's here today, to come up with this framework. Bonner County would contract with a consultant engineer as our quiet zone proponent for a relatively small fee, which would, to be determined in the future. We don't have an answer as to what that fee would be. And that engineer would handle Bottle Bay and all other future quiet zone needs. Each community that is interested in a quiet zone would need to hire the selected consultant engineer at a much higher, also to be determined, cost and a site-specific fee on a retainer basis to perform the necessary work to study, design, facilitate construction of the necessary safety upgrades, and do all of the federally required paperwork, and cover the ongoing maintenance and inspections and recertifications in perpetuity. In some cases, such as the Bottle Bay Road Crossing, the total cost of the engineer's scope of work and all required crossing upgrades and maintenance is expected to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. If at any point in the future the community fails to fund the ongoing expenses for maintenance of, for maintenance or the work of the consultant engineer, the final portion of the retainer funds would be used to cancel the quiet zone and return it to a normal train horn crossing. So that's, that's kind of thousand-foot level synopsis of what this new framework would look at. Getting a little bit deeper into it, we've got several phases identified on, on how this would work for communities that are interested, and the work that the different consultant engineer would perform in each of these phases and, and what those would look like. And it's my understanding that the Bottle Bay residents are interested in implementing this new framework to open up the door to us being willing to consider additional quiet zones into the future. And if this is something that the board is interested in pursuing and opening the door up for additional communities to do, part of that conversation needs to be looking at the existing quiet zone crossing that we have at Cootney Bay, and do we continue that with the status quo of Bonner County handling all of the costs of that crossing and maintenance, or does that get rolled into this new framework? Does that community, community need to start participating financially again to keep that quiet zone in place? Those would be questions for the board if they're interested in moving forward with this framework that I would put out there. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Does the board have questions?
A lot of questions, because in theory, I don't have an issue with the idea of a quiet zone. It's the application, implementation, and the ongoing aspect that creates hurdles. And then how much does the county invest and involve itself in without obtaining some liability? So because I, I agree that if the community wants to do it and fund it, that it's reasonable for us to help identify how would they achieve the outcome that they're looking for, for the area. But with that comes some concerns of how do we implement that? And you could end up, for example, on, on first blush, you don't have enough money to do the maintenance, but do you have enough money to actually return it to the original, you know, the horn status, which means then that the county would then be absorbing whatever cost associated with that, that would be, and that wouldn't be reasonable to all of the taxpayers of the county, because this is benefiting a particular community. So for me, in order to mitigate that kind of exposure, you could make it work, but you would have to have a system in place that says your account can't fall below what it would require us to return it to that status. So a little bit more teeth in it, so that we're not just left with the county then bears the responsibility of returning it to that status. That, some of the questions and concerns come when, if you're not in HOA that can put it into, you know, a function that requires contribution from the community, that's where I would have that legal question of can we, because we're telling a community like in this, you're saying Bottle Bay is going to do this, but can the county expect that whole group to do it just because we helped create that versus it's part of a homeowners association agreement that they enter into, kind of similar to, I'll use mine as an example, we have an HOA solely for roads, and the road repair requires, it actually very clearly explains, each homeowner has this number of votes. This is what you have to contribute for this. If you all don't agree, you can't exceed this dollar amount, so that it's very clear. But the county takes a position on all of those that says, "We don't enforce any of that. That becomes a civil issue." And this one, we're doing a little bit of crossover, because we do have, to have that, we have to have something in place. And so how do you mitigate the risks associated with making a change and the funding and then the legal requirement for the community members who currently, I'm gonna just make an assumption that everybody here wants this quiet zone, but not everybody that moves in there might want to pay for that quiet zone. And where does that, and maybe they have enough to fund their account, so it stays at that level, but what is that level? How do you increase for the interests of the changes, and what is that dollar amount? And I know that you give it as a, a high-level view of it. Those are my concerns with the county getting involved in it, because this is a community direction that have implications that we would need to make sure we protected the interest of the county budget if, in fact, you had to turn it over, because equally, I think for the, the quiet zone that isn't existent, it benefits one group of people. Should the county be funding that? Because, and I, I think I'm correct in this, but I'll say, I'll, I'll give myself a 70% right, that there was a time when the assessor's office was giving a reduced rate on property, like you could put in a, a qualifying factor that actually said, because of being next to a railroad, there was taxes that weren't all collected. And I think that that stopped, I want to say, two years ago, because people were not seeing a difference in terms of the sale. At what point do we get involved in that? Those are my concerns, noting that you could build it to where this would work, but for me, on a risk side, I need to make sure I look at the ways in which it could potentially not work, because as the community, if you lose the funding to keep this going, what's the dollar amount that we would say needed to be there? And that should be, even if you don't know the dollar amount, if it just said that in whatever contract that was agreed to, that it needs to be assessed every year, the account can't fall below this, because we need to have the funds to turn it back over, that's a safety net essentially for the county exposure, because the entire county shouldn't have to fund it for that, for an individual community. But if we put in a safety net, that's, that's my thing, is to make sure we do something like that if we move forward. I think it's a fantastic idea to help a community achieve an outcome that they want to, but we equally have to balance that with the rest of the county and what impact that would have to our budget, because in as much as it would cost hundreds of thousands to maintain, it can cost us a good amount that we technically may not have even budgeted for to return it to its original condition. And that, that, that's one of, and then making sure that we're not absorbing any liability for any change, and that we're not in charge of maintaining what that would be if it did in fact change, because even when we are in the right, we can get pulled into some liability, and the community would need to absorb all of that liability. That, that's just my, in terms of a risk thing. I think that the way that this was done was very good in addressing that the cost can be exponential for doing it, but if they want to do it, then we can help provide an avenue. I just want to make sure we provide that line that says, if it had to be reverted back. And I think if we did do this, I think you do have to address quiet zones in general, so that it's uniform across the county, because arguably, if I'm on the flip side, my argument on this side would be, why is the county funding someone else's quiet zone and not my quiet zone then? And so we need to be fair and equitable across the county, because they are saying they're going to raise the money. We've seen that we didn't, there's not, the county essentially is funding a good part of the other one. So that's what I would like to see, is fairness between everybody that owns a quiet zone. And I think that this does address that, and you brought that up too. So I think that it's, it can absolutely be done. I just want to make sure we address what does reversion look like and who, how the county makes sure we're not paying for a reversion in the event that people lose interest in the funding of it. Does that make? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And then, in phase one of the consultant's work, it'd be looking at the overall feasibility and what those future phases would cost. Fourth phase being, we're closing it out, interest is gone, there's no money, we're reverting that. So, the way I'm envisioning this is that the community would need to put up retention to begin with, and that retention would cover the costs of the fees of the engineer and the contractor to revert a crossing back to its normal train horn status. Your question about HOA, the way that the first community did it, and the way that I'm envisioning this, is that the community would have to form an LLC. That way, there's actually a legally binding entity with which to do contracts with, and it would be totally voluntary as to who wanted to participate financially in that. With the first one at Cootenay Bay, it was, you know, the community created an LLC and opened up a GoFundMe account, and they had a banner out there for raising money, and people, you know, put money in the GoFundMe account, and eventually, they raised the money. But it was all voluntary, nobody's ever going to be compelled to participate, even if they live in the neighborhood benefiting from it, they're not required to participate financially. So, it would really fall to those who have the means and the desire within the community to raise that money.
Can I ask you on the formation of the LLC, were they required to carry insurance?
Not that I recall, no.
What about a bond? Was it just how they funded it and not any?
The Cootenay Bay one, they put the money into an escrow account, which we had access to, to draw from as we constructed the improvements. And as we did maintenance a couple of years later, as all the original plastic and rubber things were broken off, we drew the remainder out, there was, I think, $3,000 left in there out of the 15. So, it didn't cover much maintenance going forward, but...
I think that's what I have for now, is just kind of things to consider. I'm going to, I do see that we didn't have a risk review, and one of my questions would be, would we, for a project like this, we do this when we're doing developments, would we have done a bond while we're doing that phase of changing, because of the liability associated with the change? And a little bit of a, and I'm kind of thinking more of, if you make the, because I see the value of doing something a community wants, but if you're going to make that change, the change itself has liability associated with a change, which is why, when we're doing developments, we are asking people to hold charity bonds. Is that something that we did or did not do? And if...
We did not do it at Cootenay Bay, but I believe we could do it as part of this framework, if that was something the board wanted to implement as one of the requirements.
Because my view is not whether or not to help them do it, it's how do you mitigate the risk associated with the county, and then create a process by which the community could do it? That's really my position on it. Because I read through it, there are some things that I think deserve a insurance risk legal review of it, but in, and with kind of that disclaimer of, I didn't want to get into anything related to how much money would be left in a potential account, and then restoring it, and then being responsible, it's just whatever's there is left behind if you didn't have enough to fund it, to like have those kinds of disclaimers in the system, because anything more than that has us spending our resources to manage a community project. And so, that's my only view, is a little bit more risk and legal, with an opportunity to add additional things as deemed legally reasonable and appropriate by recommendation of concerns that we have after learning what we got back from the first attempt. So, that's my only thought. I think that, I think that the framework that was presented is not an unreasonable framework. I just had additional insurance risk liability concerns too, that could be built into it.
Mr. Mulder, could you please describe simply the jurisdictional lines, if you would, between what is within the federal jurisdiction at the railroad crossing versus on the county road, where the county jurisdiction begins, and kind of what separates the two?
Yeah. So, lines are blurry in some cases, but the Federal Railway Administration has authority over all railroads, and though the railroads own the right-ofways, the Federal Railway Administration has some level of control over what happens within those railway right-ofways, probably stemming back to when the government granted those to the railroads to begin with. But the railroad owns their right-ofways, usually 100 to 200 feet wide. We have easements for the roadways crossing those right-ofways in most cases, and the language of those easements heavily benefits the railroad and not the county. Most of them have something to the effect of, the railroad with 90 days notice can declare any crossing is going to be closed at their will, and we're just out of luck. If we're working within 25 feet of railroad tracks, we need to have specialized training, we have to have railroad flaggers present, we need permits from the railroad. If we're outside of that 25 feet, then it's, you know, normal maintenance and operations within our easement to maintain the road within their right-ofway. And the FRA has set up the rules for the quiet zones at the federal level, and interestingly enough, the railroad doesn't get a say in whether or not a quiet zone is created. It's between the local road jurisdiction, Bonner County in this case, and the Federal Railway Administration. And the railroads have the opportunity to make comments, as does ITD and other entities, but ultimately, it's between Bonner County and the FRA. And it's, a lot of those rules are set up in kind of a, if shall, you know, if Bonner County does these steps, then the FRA shall implement a railroad crossing quiet zone.
Thank you. Does the board have additional questions?
That's actually what is concerning, is because when you're talking about liability, then you have the opportunity to shift liability, and then there's also the people that live in the area that have a desire for quiet zones, which is reasonable, but you have the people that are not used to that as well, that are part of the community that go in and out of those areas. And so, that's where there's, there's an element also of changing into quiet zones from what is, what's more usual and typical, requires some education and training that that would be a process moving forward. But I just want to make sure we cross off all of the risks that we can, because even in cases where we know we're right, we argue with the railroad on liability, which costs the county significantly, because we're not in district court for these types of cases. You're at a federal level that come with a dollar amount of exponential proportion from where we are, from what is their usual.
Yeah. And certainly, we understand that train horns save lives in a lot of cases, and the elimination of the train horns increases the risk. So, as you're going through all of these red tape steps, there's a lot that's focused on the safety of the crossing, either as it is, it needs, it's got to have gates to qualify as a quiet zone, it has to have a risk index that's higher than the national average of risk index already, or you have to install supplemental safety measures, like we had to at Cootenay Bay, to increase the safety of the crossing, so that the risk index is higher than the national average, even without the train horns. So, the risk is certainly something on the FRA's mind when they set up those rules.
Any additional questions for staff?
I don't have any additional questions for, well, actually, let me ask this, in terms of road and bridge, in terms of supporting, do you see that road and bridge would receive a request from a community, and that they would lend an opinion as to whether or not they supported a quiet zone based on your kind of understanding of the traffic and hazards and risks towards the county? Is that something that you see in the, kind of similar to how, when we get planning files, we're asking, what is road and bridge's opinion? Or do you see road and bridge saying, this is not our area of specialty? If that would be the case, I'm just giving that as an example, saying it's been received, and let an engineer kind of make that determination. What's your view of road and bridge's involvement?
Yeah, I mean, we'll certainly be involved every step of the way, because we have to be per FRA's rules, but I think for the most part, any crossing that has gates could qualify for a quiet zone, with the necessary steps being taken. So, I would point any community who's interested to the new framework, and, you know, and to the proponent engineer that the county selects, and say, you know, if you think you're interested, go talk to this engineer, they're going to do phase one study for you, and, you know, really have a lot more detailed answers on what's it going to cost you, and then you can make determinations of, are you actually interested to really pursue that, knowing the true costs of the upgrades and the maintenance going forward, and the engineer's services? With a consultant engineer handling the lion's share of the workload, I think we'd be much more open and receptive to the option of implementing more quiet zones. But as it's been the last five years, we've just been telling everyone, no, absolutely not, we're not going to do any more. This has been way too much time for staff to handle and keep this implemented.
I would, I agree with that. I was hoping your answer was that you guys would not want to give comment, but just point to a direction, so that, for me, on the risk side, it is pushing the liability of an outcome decision on any phase to someone deemed the expert, in that it doesn't remove exposure, but it does kind of address some of the risk benefit to the county, versus saying the county made a determination, versus the county just said, you've hit the checklist that say you can ask this question, and so, your application can move forward to the next level. So, that was my only one I wanted on the record of what your position would be for that.
And within the language of the framework, there's a lot of language, it's very clear that, you know, Bonner County has ultimate authority over these crossings, these roadways, these quiet zones, and that, you know, the commissioners have the authority to make any decision in the future, including cancellation of quiet zones, if, for whatever reason the board wanted to.
So, I don't have any further questions for staff at this time. Do you have any additional questions, Commissioner?
I don't have any additional questions for staff at this time.
And am I correct in the assumption that you're not prepared to make a motion at this time?
I think there needs to be some legal stuff into it that's missing from it. For me, and the question on the bond, I think that I could make a motion that allowed me to add in that, if you're willing to, in conversation, there are some stuff that I think should be included into it, that allows for us to add the question about the bond, because it's a, for me, that's a valid question to ask, because we do that in other sites of development, as well as a little bit more that addresses the account funding balance and establishing a level at which it must be a minimum to ensure that the cost of reversion does not get put onto the county. That's not in the language. And so, the way, if I were going to make a motion, it would have to allow me to move forward with this as a foundational argument, with the opportunity to amend based on further legal and risk review for insurance, and the minimum available, because in part, the dollar amount of what I'm calling the minimum doesn't have to be known, because it will change from crossing to crossing based on the expert opinion, but the language of a minimum fund balance to ensure that the county isn't bearing that responsibility isn't in this document. And so, that's something that I would like to see there, so...
Yeah. I think we could, you can make a motion to that effect. If this is approved, tentatively, with some changes that you want, the next step would be the county will go out and solicit and try and find which consultant engineer we want to use for this purpose. I know the communities are also interested in participating in that purpose and making a selection of who we're going to use, and we'd have to come back with a professional services agreement and a much more detailed cost and scope of work for the county's portion to hire this engineer as our representative. And we could have a revised framework that includes performance bond and some minimum account balances and stuff, as part of that final approval when we're moving into an agreement with the consultant engineer.
So, if you're willing to make a motion based on the caveats that you've noted, then we could hear public comment on the topic and deliberate based on that motion?
Yeah. Let me ask a question. What is the anticipated cost that you're thinking it would cost the county for a consultant, in terms of that would come out of our budget?
It's really hard for me to guess, but I would say less than $10,000 would be my guess. But not having had those negotiations with anyone, and just kind of imagining general scope of work, and whether or not they would want that on a continuing basis, or a one-time fee to be our, name our representative, and then most of the costs will be pushed off onto the communities for all the actual work, would be part of the negotiations with a consultant.
The reason I ask that is, the county did not budget for another line to address the county paying for the consultant aspect of railroad crossings. That wasn't in our budget, and we're in our new fiscal year. And so, if I were to take that into effect, my motion actually includes that, if that's the direction this community would want to go, it would have to include that cost being borne by the community, because we didn't budget, that's not what we budgeted for. And I'd have that conversation. And in a way, this should be a self-sustaining, based on those who want it, not based on the county creating another line for this. So, I would approve the framework to establish the railroad crossing quiet zones and direct road and bridge department to pursue selecting the most qualified consultant engineering, but with the disclaimer that that cost is borne by those who want this, because we only need to seek a consultant if, in fact, they put forward an application checklist that meets it, and then at that time, road and bridge can take action to identify a consultant that would then bear the cost, and then their community can pay the cost associated to the consultant. Because otherwise, you're asking us to do something in the budget that we didn't say we would do this fiscal year. What are the thoughts of the board on that?
I concur.
Okay. So, I move to approve the framework as a foundation for the establishment of road and bridge, or road, sorry, just, I just put that in there and it's nowhere in, close to that. I'm going to start over. I move to approve this framework as a foundation for the establishment of railroad crossing quiet zones, and direct the road and bridge department to pursue selecting the most qualified consultant engineer to act as the quiet zone proponent at the cost of the requister, and to bring back a selected consultant's professional service agreement scope of work and fee at a later meeting, noting that the foundational framework presented in this meeting is open to additional amendment by the board of county commissioners to address a potential bond and a potential minimum amount required in the account to ensure that any burden of reversion back to the original state is not borne by residents of Bonner County. I can't repeat that, we're going to have to play it back.
Step down in a second?
There you go.
Okay. So, now we're going to open it up to public comment on this agenda item. So, anyone who would like to speak and offer a public comment on this agenda item, if you'd please raise your hand, we'll call folks up one at a time to step up to the microphone, so certain in the front row, if you would please step up to the microphone and state your name and residency before your comment, please.
Commissioners, my name is Steve Morgan, I live in Pondure Point in Bonner County. I'm going to take a little different tact with what we've heard so far. I've done, oh, probably at least 25 hours of research, legal research, into the issues, specifically liability was one of the major concerns that you have, and I think you've raised a very good point, and I think that definitely needs to be looked at much more closer than it has, based on my research. But the philosophical part of it, I tend to disagree with, okay? Most of the research that I've indicated, that I've done, has indicated that quiet zones actually improve safety. I know that may be shocking, but there's actual documentation that it does that, and even suspension of train horns. does that. And even suspension of train horns don't seem to make that much of a difference. They overall, they do improve the safety of that. And I have some, I can show you that documentation. The gains are 15 to 30%, fewer train vehicle collisions after they're implemented. Gate running is reduced by 60 to 90%. And that's from the Federal Railroad Administration's report, RR 19-12 in 2019. There's also community emergency response benefits. There are studies that also show that, CDC Noise and Health Fact Sheets and the FRA Human Factors Memo 2021-03. So these things do improve safety. I know it sounds, you know, contradictory, but it's better for the community overall. Another reason, I think, is just basically fairness and, and balance. You know, the community itself gains overall, not just the, the chosen few, so to speak. And I think that that's something that the board ought to continue to fund and to, and to take that into account. Because the way I've read this framework, I don't see anybody in my community willing to step forward and, and do what's being proposed here. And I don't think anyone else, if they really dig into it, will see the same thing. As far as liability, I think by doing this, you may be actually gaining liability. Because if you, I will submit a brief to you later on, but, you know, right now, you've got immunity if you, if there's an accident there, okay? If you try to delegate that down to the community, the community would be liable, which I don't think anybody would want to accept. And you would lose your, your own exemption from that. So I, I absolutely urge you to have legal take a very close look at this before you proceed forward.
Thank you, sir.
Again, anyone who would like to make a comment, please, I'm gonna work my way across the rows. So go ahead, sir. Please state your name and residency.
Dan McDaniel, 21 Spur Drive, Ponder Point. Initially, I believe everybody had good intentions going into this process on both sides. And if I just have it a number in my mind, 20% of the people in Ponder Point, all the way whiskey jack, contributed some money. And that was favorable. And then, of course, the county side, they worked well with us. But neither side went beyond the investment of the project. Neither, it'd be like buying a vehicle. You have insurance and other expenses. That was never brought to our attention that there would be ongoing expenses. It was a trial balloon for everybody. There's no doubt about it. But the burden coming back to us, either removing it or asking for funding of it, is not fair, quite honestly. That's up to the department managers who brought this forward to have a discussion with themselves and with us to say, what is the funding going to be? That should have been known to us. It was never revealed. So that, that's one of the processes there. Second, the discussion on this presentation, it tends to be very finite towards a small group of people trying to fund a large project. But in reality, you're targeting homes in an area. But that darn whistle blows a mile away. You can hear it. And you're gonna hear it coming and going, up and down the highway. So you can't really target that little finite location to say, now you're responsible for everybody else's benefit. I'm from Chicago and part of my life, the metros go through there left and right. They have crossings. They have no, not no horn crossings. You cannot blow a horn in the city of Chicago. The trains are roaring through there at 70 miles an hour, going east, west. You'll never hear a horn. It's not an issue. They don't talk finance. Somehow, they make that work. I don't know how they do it, but they do. I don't believe I have much else to contribute other than my position there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that, I want to make a kind of clarification. What's come before this board is community members are asking this of the board to support something, not that the board is pushing a quiet zone in the area. And so we're responding, and I think Road and Bridge responded to the request as received from the community. And so, and I think when I heard Road and Bridge give a comment, when they talked about funding, it wasn't specific to a location. It was essentially anybody that would contribute to what the request was, was on a, you said GoFundMe for the one that was already put in. And I, I think the difference is, is does the county do it or does the public do it? And what's that? I think that's the difference of, I think, why it's written the way that you're seeing it from Road and Bridges, that the checklist that you're seeing in that file.
I'm a Ponder Point resident. I was one of the--
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, Patricia Sheets. I'm sorry. I was instrumental in the process for establishing our quiet zone. It took us almost two years. In that two years, the railroad had to approve it, Road and Bridge had to approve it. We went through, we went through all the meetings, all the documentation. We were told how much money we had to raise. We raised the money, established the quiet zone. It's been a godsend for us and for many, many others to suddenly back up and try to get more money out of us when we were never told, it was never in writing, it was never told, we were never told the amount it would cost to maintain the quiet zone once it's already established. And here, all of a sudden, we're being told, oh, no, you have to raise thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep our quiet zone? Is this fair? I propose that we be grandfathered. We're already there. We've been there for five years. Please don't change our, you know, after everything we went through to have that established. No communication about any of this. Please, consider grandfathering us. All the future quiet zones, you do whatever you want to do. But we have it. And our property values are raised. We pay to maintain places in the county that we don't even use. We pay through our taxes to maintain everything. Schweitzer Road, all, all the roads in the whole county, we pay to maintain, even if we don't use them. So I just really encourage the commissioners to consider grandfathering us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the front row on this side? All right, I'm gonna move to the second row on this side of the room. I'm gonna go to the third row. Please, please state your name and residency.
Good to see you both. Matt Loam, I live at 817 Bottle Bay Road. There's so many topics going through my mind. I hope I can speak clearly and concisely. Thank you, Matt, first of all, for, for helping us with this. We started this about nine months ago when members of my community realized that the train whistles, the train bridge has been widened and we increased train traffic by a tremendous amount. I don't think I need to spend any time convincing why it's so important. It does set the tone for a community. A family with children would not want to move into my neighborhood because a four-year-old would be awakened by these train whistles. You don't want to establish a community that is hampered by a racket of noise. So I think we're past that now, but I can't stress it enough how, how important this is. It's not a luxury. It's, it's a necessity. I also grew up in the suburbs of Chicago. I never heard a train whistle in my life. Highland Park, Deerfield, Skokie, Glencoe, doesn't matter. Beautiful, beautiful train things that came down, two in front, two in back. There'd be a coffee house next door. Trains drive right by. The city paid for that. As a little review, in order for BNSF to hold its easement, which is what a train thing is, they need to do two things. They need one sign that has an X and two Rs, and they need the painted thing in the road that's about 20 yards away that says railroad crossing. And that's it. And that's why when you go to Sarinca and you go to all these places, there's nothing there at all. So Asia, I understand your concerns and we're gonna, we're gonna address them one by one. But liability, as far as the danger of something, lasting a train whistle is exactly the lowest common denominator. It's the lowest level of safety that you can possibly use. The train whistle blowing is to warn you that there is danger. Does a double yellow line in the road, what does that do? It warned you there is danger. It doesn't stop you from driving into an upcoming car. It warned you that if you don't follow the rules, you could do that. A red light does the same thing. When you stop at a red light, the people driving by don't blare their horns reminding you to stay parked. The red light is a cue. There is no barrier that a train whistle does that if you just, it's stopping you from either killing yourself or being a fool. So I just wanted to, to blast that out of the water as far as, he's absolutely correct. The quiet zones will massively increase it. Getting back to the Chicago, the city where I grew up, they budgeted for that. Every time I speak to people about it, laymans about it, and I'm a layman myself, they say, well, why didn't the county pay for that? This should be for the county. Why do we have to pay for that? Such things. I agree. I wish the county did pay for it. I genuinely do. But if we want to wait until 2048, I just made that number up, until we can budget the money to get this all done, and then the next decade, just continue this racket, this opportunity that, that Matt and I have worked on, and Matt is, is doing a phenomenal job, and I'm trying to jump in, I'll sort of make this quick. What we are really asking is basically and simply, can we, this vote would be, may we commence with phase one? And in phase one, people would say, well, how much does it cost? Nobody could give an answer for that. What is it, what's required? No one could give an answer. There's so much red tape, BNSF, there's so much to juggle, that we've done our very best to organize the pieces. And the only thing we can do is start. And what we're, what we are telling you guys is our community, we have lawyers, we have realtors, we have business people, we have just community outreach members. We are ready to band together and provide the greatest assistance that we possibly can to come up with an outreach program to handle something that frankly, the community should have handled. And it's before you guys were even on this board. This, this predates us. The problem of doing nothing about railroad crossings, the whole issue is the safety rating. When you drive by something that has, the safety rating is, I better hear it, but the, the safety rating is horrific. It's like, whatever. If we were to raise it up, we, we comply with higher safety ratings, and there's no reason to blow the whistle. If you look at Ponder Point, I'm so glad that it's done, but it is no engineering masterpiece. It is cement going in both directions about 20 yards so that you don't drive into the train. Each crossing that is interested in doing this will have its own unique set of circumstances to bring that safety rating up. The biggest concern is copycat. One thing that Matt was expressing is that if, if my community, which appears ready to move, I gotta, if my community, which appears ready to move on it, raise the money to do it, so will everybody want it. So those are the things that we will need to negotiate and navigate. But the community at Bottle Bay Road, there is tremendous interest in doing it. There is tremendous financial incentive to, people are, want to raise the money to do it. And just to sum it up, what we are really asking is, let us proceed onto phase one so we can get some questions answered and frame this. It's very difficult to frame it when you have to juggle incredibly legal, you know, the, ever, anyway, I'm being repetitive, but we're hoping to move on to phase one.
Thank you. Sir, in the back, really, does you also want to comment?
I'm Clint Merrill. I live on 207 Bellevue Drive, so I'm proximate to the Bottle Bay Ligonite Crossing. And I just had a couple of points of commentary and a couple of requests for clarification. First point on clarification, but I'll precede that with just a general statement that I've, one of the authors of this document and thinking through the, the process, costs in perpetuity were first and foremost. We totally understand that the initial cost is a fraction of the lifetime cost. And so the whole plan, including the funding and the community efforts, are not a one-time. We understand that this is something that we would have to create a sinking fund for, that we're investing in on a regular basis to maintain sufficient funds for ongoing maintenance. We're gonna discover what those are, right? That's gonna be part of our decision-making process as to whether we decide to move forward or not. But that's fully baked into our expectations, potentially unlike some previous projects. Commissioner Asia, you mentioned a few times the quote unquote cost of reversion. Is that factual or assumption or assumptive in terms of a meaningful cost to revert from a quiet zone to a non-quiet zone?
I was responding to Mr. Mulder's comment that it would have to get, that the funds that would remain in the account would be used to revert back to the original.
Okay. Maybe I could redirect the question to, to Matt?
Sure. I mean, to use the one that we've got in place, say we wanted to cancel the Cootenay Bay Quiet Zone, for whatever reason, we would need to remove those concrete barriers.
Would you?
So instead of, so instead of, so the, the point of what--
I mean, the horns should start glowing again.
Hold on, please. Sorry, go ahead. We're not doing a dialogue with Road and Bridge.
You were asking me to clarify my comment. And so if there, so essentially, the cost, my answer was based on if there's a cost associated in restoring it to its original condition, which is what happens in a lot of different areas, that that's what that would be used for. That was what my comment was referencing. I was, it's not a fixed dollar amount. That's why I said we, there's a lot that comes in the, essentially what you're saying is your first phase.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Next point is on liability. I just wanted to maybe reduce some of the quanti, the qualitative concerns about liability and make sure that we're understanding that there is a quantitative measure of safety at that crossing and the investments made in it would raise that crossing per an independent review to a certain score that mitigates horns. That's cut and dry. Somebody could argue that, but then you'd have to start arguing the, the viability of all railroad safety measures. If they're up for interpretation per certain circumstances, then the, the liability is pretty much unmitigated. So I just would want to consider that part of this process is to go through a quantitative engineering-based approach to reach a safety score that qualifies that crossing for a quiet zone. And I would assume that that process itself has guardrails around it to mitigate liability, whoever signs off, whoever scores it. There's, I mean, this is a, this is a chain of responsibility here where I, I would wonder if there's any wiggle room for somebody just coming in and questioning the whole thing and throwing the liability back on the, on the county. I'll put that out there. Third thing, I would request that the existing quiet zone status be handled on a separate matter and not be binding to the approval of this process to move forward with future quiet zones. I understand there's concerns with other quiet zone areas and whether they would be grandfathered in or not. Well, my concern is that we get caught up in that dialogue indefinitely, and it holds up all of their future, future progress. So my, my request is that we separate those. Let's see, number four, you mentioned that there are provisions for tax benefits on property owners who live in proximity to crossings because of the reduction in property value. If that's a fact, then, and this is not approved, I'll just state plainly that I will start a campaign to ensure that homeowners are educated about that and go through the process to reduce their tax liability. That'll end up costing the, the county.
So what I said was that the assessor actually was, they were automatically reduced when the assessor was doing that for a period of time. So that was at the assessor's level. They were automatically affixing if they were close to railroads.
Right. So I, and I want to understand if that's happening. I, I would want to do an audit of my own tax assessment to determine if I'm, if I'm in that or not. And I think that should be reviewed across all of the properties, that they are, that they are being judiciously remunerated for proximity to, to crossings. So it, that's, that, that could be a, a can of worms, just adding that. Let's see, the fifth thing is--
Wrap up your--
Yeah. Just want to talk about like the general statement of benefit to the, to the community-- at large, thinking as an investor, thinking as what is the value to the community, both monetarily and from a quality of life point of view? Property values are impacted by this. The reputation of the area is impacted by this. I've watched a number of sort of introductions to the area, and it talks about how wonderful it is except for the train horns, which are running through unmitigated, unmanaged. There's also health impacts. Those you can't necessarily quantify, but when you talk about unrestricted liability, that could pop up in the future as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the back row? All right. Moving across to the back row on the other side of the room, do we have any public comment in the back row? Please state your name and residency for the record.
David Kaiser, 347 Upper Humbird. I'm a recent move here, September 2024. And all I can tell you is, is upon looking at many houses and opportunities here, my brother and sister-in-law pointed out the Ponder Point house, and talked to me about the quiet zone. And it was a big factor in buying my house. And quite frankly, if the previous residents jumped through flaming hoops to meet all the requirements to initiate and create it, inhabit through fulfillment, I do think it's a bit unfair to go back and change the rules, like the lady said earlier, it should be grandfathered in. It was the guinea pig experience. You make this, and you can go forward with other ones, but to go back and retroactively change the rules seems a bit unfair to me. And for sure, it would drive me nuts, literally being backed up to the railroad. It doesn't bother me now. And then on the other side of the 200, you have all those people in businesses that reap the benefits of a quiet zone, right? It's not just the Ponder Point people that are benefiting, it's the other side of 200 by, you know, squeaky's, Arnie's, all that kind of fun stuff. And like I said, I can just say from somebody that's just moved here a year ago, it's a big deal. And I can't believe, like the gentleman said here, how safe that is. I mean, the K rails are there, the things are there, but to go back and say, hey, now you got to come up with X, Y, or Z on the top, on funding, I just don't think that's right. Just don't. But I appreciate you taking my comments.
Thank you. Anyone in the second row? One up, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Churum Buckmelter, and I reside in Ponder Point. I don't want to take up my time talking about some mechanical things, but I would like to have staff at the end perhaps, explain what is the physical hardware, as it were, put into a railroad, quiet railroad crossing, and what does the maintenance involve? I know there's a K wall there now, and that's really, really like that. I like some of the other people here. I bought this house three years ago, and I was told it was a quiet zone, and that was a major factor in my decision to move to Ponder Point. It's a lovely place. I have to say that for the most part, the railroad adheres to the agreement, but we still have horns blowing in the middle of the night and all that stuff, but it's much, much improved. Now, I, what I would like to say is, we all know that the railroad has really increased the volume of their traffic, you know, on our railroads. I mean, after all, they had to widen the bridge across the lake. And it's one thing, maybe having a dozen trains come past your, you know, your property a day, but when you have, you know, four times that, and you have the horns blowing, things like that, it is really unbearable. So I want to get back to the issue regarding cost, and that is, where is, what role does the railroad have in this? I mean, you know, I haven't heard anybody mention, maybe they would like to contribute to this. Oh, no, you can shake your head. What I'm saying is, they have a responsibility to be a good neighbor, we all do. Plus, this is something that could be, you know, it could be an expense for them, they could be a write-off. What I'm saying is, they're benefiting from this huge rush of traffic we're suffering as a result of it. And I think that, I'd like to think that they would be considerate. I know that when I, earlier this year, when the horns were really working during the night, I contacted the regional public, yeah, public relations person for North Idaho, and they actually cut down the number of horns. I guess they sent out communiques and such. So there was some, you know, there was some sensitivity there, you know, to our request. There's one other item I want to discuss very quickly. It has to do with the quiet zone, but not the railroad crossing. And that is, the railroad parks, actually, they, it's called staging, they stage diesels right behind these people's properties, right, right in their backyards, right in their backyards. And they, they run them, run these diesels. Sometimes there's three units. You run them day and night, sometimes for a week and multiple weeks. If you want to, I really, would really urge you to go to the internet, it doesn't take that long, it's very easy, just type in "train diesels idling." Just check that out. There's a lot of, just believe it or not, there's a lot of different videos there, and there's even one of, real quick, of the, NBSF, there's, there's one of those trains. It will shock you what these people have to put up with. I don't even live adjacent to that, but I live close enough that it wakes me up. Now, the thing is this, it wouldn't take much for them to at least consider changing that location of their staging. Move it one mile down the track to the east? How about, how about a little bit to the west? Where's the golf course? And that way, they wouldn't become a public nuisance. So, I mean, they really are a public nuisance. I have a feeling that we should enter a dialogue with them and ask them to consider resolving that issue, but how about contributing if there is a cost involved? Have them pay, pay something. I know, there's an argument, they've been here first, and all this other stuff, we moved in here and all this stuff, but as the people from Chicago, these Chicago, you know, refugees, you know, they, they said they, back in Chicago, they have, they don't have those, they're all quiet zones. They don't have to have all the, all this rigmarole. So I ask you to please consider maybe approaching the railroad. We may be surprised. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann?
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Roberta Reichelt. I live in Ponder Point, and my property butts right up to the railroad. So what this gentleman said is true. The railroad constantly will park behind my house, and the diesel engine is directly behind my house, so I am the recipient of all the noise. And I realize that isn't exclusively what we're talking about today. But I did contact the railroad regarding this, and it has to do with the braking system, and they're too cheap to go with a braking system that doesn't make noise. It's terribly obnoxious, so you can thank God if you don't live by this. Regarding the train whistles, yeah, the four o'clock guy comes through and blasts his horn. I think he's asleep at the wheel, and he's just trying to get back. How do I know it's four o'clock? Because I'm up at four o'clock. But anyway, the majority of them are really pretty good about it. I'm very disappointed to hear that it sounds like eminent domain can be an issue when it comes to establishing this quiet zone with the Lord giveth, the Lord taketh away. I don't think so. I feel like we're getting ripped off there. I don't have a problem, had I known that there was an issue with maintenance, I don't have a problem with contributing to maintenance. Mr. Morgan, myself, Patricia, and a few other neighborhood members actually did the majority of the contributions to this cause. If we had realized there was more involved, if it had been brought to our attention, if it had been written down, maybe things would have been a little different. Maybe things would have looked at it differently. But for right now, I feel like this is not fair. Oh, I know, nothing's fair in the world. But, and I realize you're absorbing an expense, and by the way, do you know what happened to those ballisters that got knocked down? It was your snowplow crew that took them down. How do I know? Because I went to the YMCA swimming-
Can I ask you to direct to the board, please, not-
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Thank you. I went to the YMCA swimming one morning, and when I came back, those were down, and they were plowing the roads. So it had absolutely nothing to do with negligence on our part. It wasn't kids out there driving recklessly or anything like that. So those ballisters had to be replaced, and I realized you absorbed the expense, but it wasn't through our fault. I like those concrete things. At first, I didn't. I do think it's a great safety issue because it really brings to people's attention that there is something going on there, that they can't pass and go around. I think it's a great thing. I was not aware that they were doing inspections on this, so I can see where maybe you'd want us to absorb the cost. But I think if they decide to take away our quiet zone, I resent the fact that we would have to have a fund established to make us pay for you taking away what we paid for in the first place. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the second row that would like to offer public comment? Anyone in the first row? One up, sir.
My name is Steve Wolf, and I live in Ponder Point also. And I'd like to thank the county for working with us to establish that quiet zone. It's been a process. I'm sure there's been some frustration with maintaining it and the plastic, whatever you want to call them, barriers getting knocked down. But now, you know, now it feels to me like with the concrete jersey barriers, you know, we're there, okay? I haven't seen any cars driving around the neighborhood yet with yellow paint on them, okay? So we're there. We have a bomb-proof system, and I don't see that there's a lot of maintenance required there. Those guys aren't moving around a lot. So it feels to me like, you know, we should change our outlook on this to, you know, it's a liability, it's a great expense to, we did a really good thing, you know, and we're there. We're there. We figured out how to do these and put them in with a low-cost, ongoing cost, and not how do we figure out how to spend a whole bunch of money on consulting engineers and put up barriers to somebody else getting this benefit. So thank you for, for what we have in Ponder Point. Please, don't take it away. But think hard about how to make, learn from this experience and let others experience not having that train whistle. Thanks.
Thank you. Is it still correct that we don't have anyone online? Yes, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone in the room who has not spoken that would like to offer public comment?
May we reclaim 30 seconds?
I'm sorry. So we're going to move on at this point. We've gone all the way, we've gone all the way through the public comments, so with that, we're going to go into board deliberation.
Would you respond to the question that I-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're not obligated to respond to any questions. You're welcome to make your comment, but thank you.
So I want to give clarification. So the board is, we're not here about Ponder Point, and whether, what we're here about is only a policy that has been drafted to see if the board will approve what has been set forward. So it's not about Ponder Point. I do understand where the question came as how would we implement a policy? But the question isn't about a decision on whether or not what we do with Ponder Point, who already has their quiet zone. So that's, that's one of the first things I want to make sure I state. So I want to also clarify comments made about, prior, when the county assessor was looking at those homes that were next to railroads, they were taking into a fact, into fact, the value loss that occurs, and that when they, and I want to say it was two years ago, when they stopped, they were automatically adding that on, and then they removed it based on sales data. So the idea of a campaign of asking for, it doesn't, it's not a negative thing to even ask for, it's that there, we're bound by mass appraisal to make that determination. And so I specifically can tell you, that was a checkmark on some areas when that, there was a reflection of railroads impacting that. The question here is about, one, does the county increase its budget, because this would be an increase in budget, to, for the future, create a line item that the county were going to fund railroad crossing quiet zones? That's one of the questions. For me, if, and I can't tell because on some end, it's, some of the people, the majority of the people here are for a quiet zone, that's not the one that is seeking the quiet zone. I hear from, and I'm going to use you because you're the one who came a couple times presenting it as an item, that they want to get to the first phase. But my first phase for me on voting on this isn't going to change the motion that I made about who funds it, because the county didn't budget this. That's not the motion. And the motion is, do we move forward that allows the second group that wants this to go and get a quote for establishing a quiet zone in their area? And my answer is, the way that I motioned it, I don't have an issue with. But I do have an issue with if we, the idea of how we move forward in the future, if we're going to create line items for quiet zones, that's not what we're here being asked. It's only the motion off the table. And so for me, the motion on the table puts the cost onto the community that's asking for it. It puts the requirement to meet the standards onto the engineer and the community and what's out there. I don't have an issue with it. I have issue with making sure that the qualifying issues of ongoing maintenance, because in as much as I can appreciate comments made from people that came from other areas, our budget doesn't absorb what this cost is. It just doesn't. And so if I were to say that I had an extra $100,000 that I could put into the road and bridge budget, would it be this? There's a line of people that are asking for asphalt, and we, there's a lot of things that impact the entire county that I would not say I would push it towards. I want to say that only to say, it's not going, my position isn't going to be the county is going to be able to come into our, because we're going to hit another fiscal year where we're going to make a vote. It isn't going to increase a line that says quiet zones in Bonner County because we don't have the tax base for it. And so how this was presented to the county was, the community that wanted this was willing to fund it. And what Roden Bridge has identified is, the fund that, the funds that are being required exceed the example that we have. That doesn't mean that we're changing the example that we have. It means it exceeds it, which justified the way this was written to include additional mitigation factors for the impact to the county. So that when people come back to this vote, no one's saying any different than, than that, because I don't see, even if you were going to go to 2040, that the county would be able to fund quiet zones. We are, road and bridges a very significantly, we've got a lot of things happening in that budget line as a whole, for the county as a whole, which doesn't mean that comments made about it shifting safety isn't beneficial. There are risks that exceed that, unfortunately, this meeting doesn't allow us to actually go into as a board either, because the different levels of a railroad to a county and the costs, there is a cost just by being adjacent. We have something were to come of any event, and we have those examples. I'm confident in the way I motioned this, to move forward, to get them to their first stage. But I equally am given that disclaimer of, when it comes back and there's a cost associated, I'm not going to shift from, to saying that the county will absorb the cost of this community putting in this quiet zone. So that when you come back and I don't change, I just say, everybody's like, I said that. Because first, we did not budget for it. Second, I've been looking at our budget, we don't have the budget this year, next year, or in the next five years to create quiet zones and fund them from the county budget. We don't. So I'm confident in how I motioned it, that it addresses my risk concerns that I can address openly and the ones that I can't address openly.
So I agree that first and foremost, let's, let's separate the two issues at hand. Existing quiet zone crossing at Ponder Point was brought up as a secondary condition to be considered if the board adopts a framework. I think it's appropriate for Roden Bridge to say to the board of commissioners, you should consider the fact that we have an existing crossing, and what would you do about that? How would you handle that? And my answer to that is, I would have to go back and look at the history. What was communicated? What was the agreement? How do we fulfill and uphold an agreement that was already made? Because that's critical that we do so. And then, would any new framework apply in some way? So all of that would have to be reviewed and considered. There's no expectation on my part that we would in any way reneg on a commitment that was made, but I would have to clearly understand what was the commitment, what was the agreement, and then apply that to any new process that we establish to see whether or not it's applicable. So then, based on what's at hand, I do want to ask Mr. Mulder a question. I heard somebody bring up something about eminent domain. I've heard nothing about that associated with these. So could you please clarify if you have any awareness to-
I have no awareness of any eminent domain factors.
I appreciate that, because I would not support the use of eminent domain- I appreciate that, because I would not support the use of eminent domain to support the creation of a quiet zone. So that's my publicly stated position on that. I completely agree, Commissioner Williams, that we need to be very thoughtful about not incurring undue risk and/or costs to the county to be able to support a community request. And so I agree with the way you've motioned that we would be able to build in those safety net factors when it comes to budget and risk-related issues before any type of final document were to be approved by the board. And to be clear with the community members that I've worked with, that have come to me and asked if I would help bring this forward, which really all the work is done by others, I just had conversations with folks to understand their intent. I was clear upfront when we met that I would only support such a proposal if there was not going to be a cost to the county. Because in my mind, this is a community initiative in a specific neighborhood, can there be secondary and third order effects for surrounding areas that people benefit from? Yes, there are, but the most impactful aspect is to the immediate community, in my opinion. And I agree that our, our county budget, when it comes to road and bridge maintenance, the reality is, is that our rate of growth far exceeds our budgetary capability to maintain our existing infrastructure and make the improvements that we need. We have bridges that have to be replaced and repaired for safety, right? We have roads that have to be guardrails added and things of that nature, in addition to the regular maintenance to keep things functioning well and safely. So while, yes, there is safety improvement opportunities there, we have to prioritize as a county how those limited funds are going to be spent. And so it's my opinion that this cannot be a top priority for our budget. And therefore, my, I'm only willing to move forward with it if it is fully funded by the community members. And that goes back to the motion that I understand you two have made. And so based on that, I'm supportive of making those adjustments to a final document before it comes to the board for a vote.
I'm going to add in a concern that I have that is implied, is that staff within Roden Bridge, the, please be mindful as we go past this vote of inundating Bonner County staff on a project like this, it, it, there's, that's still a cost to the county. And so as you guys organize a community about a project, if the counties pulled away from its tasks for the masses of the county, that represents a cost to the county of doing something like this. And I can appreciate, I just want to kind of tweak a little bit of increasing safety in order to achieve a quiet zone, is how I see this, because the position of the railroad is horns create safety. In order to maintain safety and have a quiet zone, that's what this is an attempt to do. So I'm not conceding and I don't think that that's what Commissioner Domke said either, I just want to make it very clear that it's not an unsafe railroad crossing. It's a railroad crossing that desires silence and needs to concurrently reach a safety rating at the same time, but currently that crossing is safe. I want to give that disclaimer, that's all I wanted to say on it. I think that we're on the same page there.
Any additional deliberation?
No, sir.
Roll call vote, please. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Thank you, everyone. Our next item is planning. If you want to pause for just a moment before you begin, so we can let people leave the room.
Nobody gets to leave, you must stay till the end.
We're just too boring for them.
Can we ask those of you who want to leave? Exit, please.
We still have a meeting, so if you could please exit the room.
Can you guys exit? We still have a meeting.
All right, and we are on to the planning item on the agenda.
All right, thank you. Dave Fisher, Bonner County Planning, here for the, discuss the partial release of the surety agreement for file SS 622, Fisher Haven Estates. The project SS 622 is submitted to Bonner County for review in 2022. Project approved. The construction of private road.
You cannot close that.
Sorry. I'm sorry, please continue. The project approved the construction of private roads with the requirement to make improvements in accordance with Bonner County Revised Code. For the construction of the required improvements, applicant entered into a surety agreement with Bonner County Board of County Commissioners on November 20th, 2023, and submit a cashier's check equal to 150% of the engineer's cost estimate to Bonner County for the required stormwater management and road improvements. The total amount of the surety was $104,079.30 accounted for the improvements, sorry, improvements to be made. At this time, all improvements have been completed per Bonner County Engineering Department's approval memo dated October 14th, 2025, and per Condition 11 of the surety agreement, the applicant is requesting 50% of the amount of the surety to be refunded, sorry, returned, amounting to $52,039.65. And Bonner County Engineering has reviewed the as-built improvements and conducted a site visit, has found them to be in compliance with Bonner County Revised Code and deemed them complete. That's it, short. Thank you.
Or have any questions?
No questions.
Nor do I.
Based on the information before, it's moved to approve the partial release of the surety amounting to $52,039.65 for the completion of improvements for project SS 0006-22.
Step down in second. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, more deliberation?
None.
Just state that I'm, I know when we had one of these come up before, the site visit hadn't been able to be conducted, I think due to weather conditions, in this case because the site visit has been conducted, I'm comfortable with moving forward. Response?
None.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, District One, Commissioner update, I will be brief, I know we are running late with our exec. I was able last week to participate in the 2025 fire season after action review and so that was a multi-jurisdictional agency review of all of the different fires with specific focus on the Sunset and the Sagebrush fires, and I think that was a really beneficial conversation. The things that were, they weren't, folks weren't focusing on what they did well, they were focusing on what needed to be improved. And so that was a good time spent. It was a few hours long and the key takeaway was that I heard clear communication with regard to roles and responsibilities at the onset of an incident and then also the means of communication. And so those are two areas that have been identified for improvement that I know emergency management for one is working on with our other agencies and departments within the county as well as state and federal agencies, so that we can do a better job next year. They did an excellent job of fighting these fires this past season, but there's always room for us to draw from the work we did to improve. And so I just want to identify the fact that I believe everyone did a very good job, but they're just going to become lifelong learners so that we can do better every season and so I thank them for those efforts. Also, just wanted to note that there's continued focus on land use topics at the moment, including our comprehensive plan. For anyone who's interested, we still have a number of workshops remaining as we walk through the comprehensive plan map. And then finally, I was able to conduct the quarterly jail inspection on Monday and just want to thank the detention deputies as I observe their work, I see them acting in a professional manner, treating inmates with respect. Also, the condition of the facility was clean and well-maintained and there are some ongoing repair and improvement items that are being worked on, that the board has been addressing and are authorized. And so those are in process, but overall, the inspection went well, so I just want to thank everyone who's working to that end at the jail. And with that, I'll see if anybody has any questions specific to my District One update. Seeing none, we'll move on to District Two.
I'm just going to be super brief. For those of you on YouTube who keep emailing me saying Zoom isn't on, it's recognized, it's, there's, it's not a county issue, it's a Zoom issue. And so I'm just going to be, I had a lot to report out today, but I'm going to wait until next Tuesday because some of the feedback goes to some of you that are on Zoom, on YouTube saying, you are asking if I'm here, I'm here. So we hear that. I did, I've got a lot of requests for some feedback on some issues with the county and I'll just address all of that on Tuesday, but we know that you're on YouTube, we just can't change that, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have any public comment? In the room only, because I can't go to Zoom.
Technology might have something they want to say, like, it's not our fault.
Okay, seeing none, it is 2:35 and this meeting is adjourned.